Eight, Monday, November ninth, 2020. This is the Town and Brookfield Planning Board meeting. Let's do some roll call. I'm Tom Stras, Terry Ward.
Present.
Hank Domo.
Here.
Ron Mayer.
Here.
Rick Surratt.
Present.
Everybody's here. No alternates? Public comments? Oh, so you know public comments? We'll go to announcements, correspondence mail. I received an email on the funding, the chair of an email address from Eversource requesting, Eversource requested a public hearing allowed for the trimming of trees along scenic roads within the town back in February of 2020. We have not heard back from the planning board. Has the hearing taken place or do we need to reapply? The area in question is a small portion of Lightfoot Road. Our crews are currently trimming the non-scenic portion of this job and would like to complete this project by year's end. I can resubmit our application if needed.
Do you recall, Mr. Chairman, if we ever received an application from them? I don't recall.
I don't recall. That's why I'm looking at the slip, if they may have.
What was the date?
Some guidance.
When'd they say?
February.
I don't know that either. Geez, um. But I think we signed something off for them back there to just go ahead, because they were doing, they were doing trimming early in the, uh, in the spring. Also last year.
We'd have to check the minutes if we did that. We had to look at it.
There is a draft. I think they notified the selectmen that they were going to be trimming in Brookfield. I don't think they specified which roads. So I suspect we didn't tell the planning board that they were going to do scenic roads because they didn't tell us they were going to do scenic roads.
Well, regardless, they got to do it, right?
They need a public hearing before they do it.
But they looked hard on people's home, letting them know they're going to be in the area.
There was nothing in the February seventeenth meeting. Meeting was primarily a public comment about Moose Mountain permanent. So.
Nigel.
The, uh, there's nothing else.
What's it?
What's that?
The selectman or the planning board? Scenic roads are being pulled out of the planning board.
Well, I'll reach out to him and tell him he needs to apply for a hearing.
Well, you have to schedule. I think the planning board has to schedule a hearing.
Yes.
To discuss trimming on scenic roads. You can just schedule one and do it.
So schedule a public hearing for the next available date. Just do it.
The December seventh meeting. So we're here.
We got to put a notice out.
Yep.
And the notice is, um. How many days before the public hearing? Ten days or seven days?
Let me suggest, let me suggest to the estimate if they're going to keep trimming into pole weather. If they are, then a public hearing would be good. If they're not going to do it the next year, there's no rush. Right?
All right, the states are going to complete it this year.
The US?
Yes. By year's end.
Okay, so you should try to get them a hearing. At the last meeting, though.
And I would, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that we make sure we didn't redo this in February. It may not be the minutes that we found so far, but I mean, we may already done it.
I don't remember, no conversations at all. Doesn't mean it didn't happen, but I don't remember.
Yeah, I don't think it was in the, uh, March.
I'm saying do two things, do both at the same time. Check to make sure absolutely we didn't redo it and then also have them reapply it.
That timeframe, there are a lot of missed meetings here, too.
Yep.
Could have easily fallen through. Well, we still would have got the, the letter or the request or something, wouldn't we? Even if we did have the meeting.
Not if it came to the select board and the select board did not.
I'm not forward to do it, but whatever, I assume.
All right. So I asked them to resubmit an application and we'll try to have a public hearing December seventh. Okay.
It's only a month from now.
Yes, it is. All right, moving on.
Before you do that, what date was it again? That they said they sent it, February?
They go. Review of possible approval of minutes from October twelfth, the twenty-sixth, and November second. Did they want to make a motion to accept the minutes?
Yes, we'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from October seventh and November second.
Twelve, twenty-sixth, and November second.
Yep, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Accepted. February fourteenth, minutes to sign.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. So the next item is skill building review, Article Two, Section C, District's Workforce Housing Overlay, RE dash two. So everybody had opportunity to look it over.
Yes, I looked it over. I didn't have any recommendations, it just.
Questions, comments?
No. How often is this used?
I don't think it has been. I was wondering, because the first sentence is, preferences of map, which, I don't know where, where's the map? I was looking for it, the zoning warrant, I didn't see it.
For work force housing?
Yeah.
The map's rated large test.
I didn't see it and there wasn't a zoning document. That's from the, uh. Ask, well, ask your plan. I didn't see it in there either.
Well, this is, this one's labeled Workforce Housing Overlay District Map.
Okay.
But it's dated April twenty-seventh. And that says March tenth.
Oh, okay.
Maybe this is just an updated map, but it will only be a month. Same year, oh nine.
Okay.
That shows one oh nine and, uh.
Governor's warrant?
Governor's, uh, yeah. That overlay, it's all up on the map. I don't know for sure either. It's number P killed. I'm not sure what I'm looking at. Oh, there's the link right there, okay. Yeah, this is probably Governor's warrant right here. Or we're not leaving this section.
This is clear. This is big. That is pretty long, I don't know. There you go. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's good. Couldn't have to be so close, I can see.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that good?
Yes.
Because there is a, oh, I figured if you wanted to read all this stuff, you'd have to be close. So a good portion of the town is available. But, um, but up on here it says you could not, oh, there's one condition where you could not, you could only, a multifamily workforce housing could only be on a state-beating road. Such a.
And I think that was right off one oh nine, wasn't it?
Yeah.
And I think since with this, Mr. Chairman, if, um, I may.
Before.
Since this was, uh, part of the legislation and state law, I think it was pretty much unchangeable.
Are these RSAs that are mentioned in here still factual? It hasn't changed with the updated books?
How did you look?
No, I didn't. I was, I thought about it and then I got to get a chance to.
Okay. I didn't think about it.
I'll check.
All right, if there are any other questions or comments, we'll move on. So the last meeting in November for new business, we talked about the REC one district and minimum lot size and subdividing was my notes from that, that we wanted to continue discussion on that. So I have a few minutes for us to do that. Rick, you kind of had the pulse of metal and help refresh your memory and.
The, um, I believe the discussion was that we had put in the zoning that they could do, um, ten-acre rec lot subdivisions along the road with, with the regular two hundred and fifty-foot, um, lot frontage. Their, their frontage only leaves them alone. Two possible spots for that. And what, what, what it would do would cause, um, a ten-acre recreation area lot to be subdivided off the whole rec lot and allow a caretaker's house to be built on it. So. So we could, um, leave it in. I don't think it would affect anything, hopefully take it out. That would be, that would be another workout, to take it out.
Now, there were only, um, there was a limit to the locations of the subdivision.
Yeah.
There was no limit. I thought there was an.
Well, I've got two hundred and fifty-foot frontage, I won't spot them all. Does it say Moose Mountain Road or Class Five Road?
Just Class Five.
So you can subdivide and put a Class Five road in, group one. So we have to cut the lots.
Yes, right.
This is exactly right.
Yes, sir.
Was the, okay, is the area, is the area going to remain in a rec zone? If it doesn't, then we should take it out. If it remains, we can take it out. I'm just trying to figure out what harm it would be was to have it there in the first place.
It was put in in the first place, so the previous owner wanted to build this house there.
Right.
So he's gone.
So what does everybody think about taking it out?
So we're talking about, um, five acres, which is states, the minimum lot size permitted shall be ten acres.
Ten acres, yeah.
So by removing it, we're saying there's no subdividing. Is that what the goal?
I think you're going back to two acres.
You're saying you would, ma'am? So you're saying that if we take the ten out, it's going to go back to the two?
I think that's what the norm is, is it?
Yeah, but that's the minimum lot size, isn't it? The town, two acres?
That's right.
Two fifty frontage still, but.
That's right.
But you, there's nothing saying that would defer to the, to a, uh, the RA one zone.
That's, that was my point.
Yeah.
Well, then there better be some kind of a minimum there, then.
Well, originally, there was no subdividing the rec zone. And you wanted to cut a piece off and build the house. So they did a ten acre. And what it does is it creates another rec zone, a ten acre rec zone, which would qualify for a caretaker's house.
So that's why I'm saying that it would not revert back to the two acre minimum. Why would it do that? It's in the rec zone. Doesn't the rec zone stop you from subdividing it into two acre lots? It only allows for a ten acre minimum.
Right. Well, if they were to separate out a caretaker's parcel out of that, that would still have to be the two acre minimum, wouldn't it? Then two fifty frontage, if it was a second lot?
Well, the rec zone can have a caretaker's, um, house on it.
So then it wouldn't be subdivided to, to provide for that lot, for that caretaker's house. It would still be part of the rec lot.
So if the owner built the house there, he'd have to.
Six.
The owner could sell the houses if he sold the whole rec zone. So like divide ten out, so he'd have to sell the house or sell the rec zone that wouldn't go together anymore.
Why, why do you say that, Rick? Why do you, why do you say, why do you say the rec, the rec can't be, the rec zone can't be subdivided? Does it say that in the zone?
It does not say it cannot be, but it doesn't say.
Then, then it's allowed. You don't, if you don't say it's not allowed, it is stated it's allowed.
So the rec zone was a rec zone, it wasn't a residential zone, which allowed to build. Bordeaux wanted to build a house there.
I remember that. But I don't remember the discussion about it not being subdivided.
So he wanted to, um.
I remember he wanted to, I remember the apple tree was, he wanted to take that out.
Yep. And, and build a house. And he didn't want to change it back to residential agriculture. Well, they weren't going to allow him to, so they allowed him to, if he wanted to, he could subdivide the rec zone into another rec zone. And then he built his house, which would be the caretaker's house on the new ten acre rec zone. And now affect the rest of it.
I don't, I don't know if that's the intent of the rec zone to begin with, is to allow it to be divided into two, well. Right? Purpose is to create, this is to provide for active recreational use in the zone. And then minimize the negative impact of the environment or the historical residential agricultural character the community has outlined in the master plan. So to allow subdividing the rec zone would kind of go against the intent, right?
They say that putting it in the zone goes clear, adventure in hand.
Because the recreational lot requirement, A, minimum lot size permitted shall be ten acres.
Also bear in mind if they divide it up, so the rec zone's ten acres, the rec zone is gone. It will be all ten acre subdivision.
Right.
That might not be about that.
Well, what if this rec zone is well over ten acres? Call it twenty acres. He could subdivide, subdivide it into two ten acre rec zones, couldn't he? And then put a house on one of them?
Yeah, but it could also be if you subdivide it into ten lots, it could be, you know, five different businesses that are related to recreation. I don't see, it isn't, doesn't it prevent them from making it residential?
Well, there's nothing in here saying that this intended to be a residential.
That's what I mean. It's intended to be a recreation. So if you wanted to have one ten acre, they golf or it's another ten acre company comes in and it puts a, um, what do you call that? The disc golf thing and then a putt-putt thing or something different. Isn't that what the intent is?
It seems to be the intent.
But, and they created a rec zone the way it was, so it wouldn't become a residential subdivision. It seems like that's what the intent was. Yes?
Don't remember what, I wasn't here. I'm, I'm just reading it, what it says is unclear. Make it clear is all I'm saying.
Is there a break for, a tax break for a rec zone?
No.
No, so it's not like current use then?
It's in current use. It is in current use, but there's nothing specific for the rec zone.
So if it's in current use, then you go to build a residence on it, that kind of changes things then, doesn't it? Not principled.
And, and the caretaker property was there to service the rec zone for a caretaker property. That's what it was for. So that didn't change the use of the zone. So I guess my opinion, I guess, would be just leave it in.
As long as the owner becomes a residence, other than a caretaker's zone.
Well, it can't be a residence. It has that, you're right that it should be defined. If it's not defined the way I'm thinking, it should be changed. So it's more definitive.
What is your definitive definition?
That's a rec zone and you can't, you can't, it's not a residential zone. So we have to somehow put in there clearly that any activity in the rec zone is for recreation. But I think it already says.
But it says, uh, it says what I mean, purpose.
That could be in Number Four, right? You could add to Number Four, you're permitted and conditionally permitted uses. You could put in a C there that says it could be a caretaker's.
What would you strike to just take out the subdivision? The ten acres?
Well, I think it defines, it says the minimum lot size permitted shall be ten acres. So if you have a rec one zone, it has to be ten acres or bigger, right? That's what I gathered from that.
So you could add the eight and the five, right? Just say that it is not subdividable.
Well, I think it says minimum lot. There's only one lot in town that's currently rec one.
But like I said, if it's twenty acres, then only ten of it can be rec. If there's a house on one of them, one of the ten acre parcels.
Chris?
This, uh, wouldn't it make sense to just clarify the language in terms of it not being a residence in any of the rec zones? Because it's currently being used as a residence.
Right.
And so wouldn't it make sense, instead worrying about subdividing the lot sizes, if you just clearly state that it cannot be a residence, then who cares what happens beyond that? Like if, if it's going to remain a rec area, it would have to be used for recreational purposes, not a residence. But if the owner doesn't say that it can't be used as a residence, then it's open to anything. So if there's going to be a change, it would seem to be that it would be in the idea of keeping it from being a residence or allowing it to be.
Yes, sir.
I think the problem with doing that is if, if the owner wants to live on his, his business zone, his business area, that's going to preclude him from doing that. And is that.
Always doing that.
I know, but if you change it, say it's only for, for recreation and not for residential, then the person isn't going to be able to stay on the property.
The caretaker's living on, in the rec zone. So that's okay right now. But this is talking about subdividing land in the rec zone to make more rec zones, more houses.
Oh, you're saying that each, each ten acre rec zone could be subdivided again for a caretaker?
Could have.
Oh, you're saying that each.
If you're subdividing the rec zone.
There's no language saying it can't be a residence. So it could be subdivided into another rec zone, but, so if you had another owner, like you were saying, for a different business, that would mean that that owner could live on there.
He can build a caretaker's house on his ten acres.
But it's all different to show what a caretaker's house look like. It's going to be a residence, you'd be able to build.
Yeah.
Step, step back, is it bad to have ten acres on in the rec zone? Is there something wrong with that? I mean, if they wanted to subdivide the ten acre parcels or larger and have recreation, you don't want that? Is that what we're saying?
So how was, let's, let's, how was Moose Mountain determined to be a rec one zone? So how, you know, everything in town is residential agricultural and that that property was put into a rec one zone. So unless you would want to take other properties in town that are residential agricultural and put it into a rec zone, that's where I see this language being, is you would be changing from one zone to another, a piece of property, it had to be ten acres or more.
So this was done in the early nineties, I believe. Do you remember, Chris? They, um.
No.
The planning board, the people that were doing this in town in that timeframe decided they needed a rec, rec zone area in Brookfield to accommodate the millions of people that were going to move here. They needed a place for recreation. So they carved out the Moose Mountain property and designated it a rec zone.
Yep. So if somebody wanted to switch a zone from residential agricultural to a rec zone, they'd have to come and, have to get it rezoned.
Right. In another part of town.
Right, another part of town. But I don't think this speaks to a current rec zone and splitting it up.
So this was put in to allow them to divide a ten acre lot off of the rec zone. And make a ten acre rec zone, put an additional caretaker's house on there. So they have the two hundred plus acres, there's a caretaker's house there now. And if they wanted to put in another one, they can divide ten acres off of the rec zone, two hundred and fifty feet of frontage, and put another caretaker's house on that new ten acre rec zone within the whole rec zone. They can keep it the way it is or you could just, we could do a warrant and change the rec zone back to the way it was originally written.
It was originally written, so it could only be a ski area, right? That's what you're talking about, when they went through all that.
No, they, they wanted, it wasn't a ski area when they designated a rec zone. Ski area was long gone. They just wanted a recreation zone. And they decided that would be it. So they rezoned it.
When you look at, ma'am?
Yes?
I mean, you look at the permitted uses and you go down the list, which part do you think we would have to clarify?
Just the subdivision.
Just to eliminate it? Eliminate the 10 acres.
I mean, hypothetically speaking, couldn't you just divide off 10 and then 10 and then 10? Until you run out of road fromage?
And only be two lots?
Yeah, it's only two lots.
But like, the public said, they could put a road in.
That's what I'm saying, so they turn Moose Mountain into essentially a.
Development.
Development.
You can't do that because it's not a residential zone. It's a, it's for recreation use. It specifies that.
By this writing, you could subdivide the whole thing and put in 10 acre lots with caretaker houses on them.
On each one.
And it would, it would look just like a thorough. But it would be on these tiny little rec zones. It's just a henry to allow having a residence in a rec zone.
That's an opinion, correct?
Yeah, it is. So if we took out the whole thing about the subdividing of the 10 acres, it would be back to the way it was.
So the way it was would be two acre lots are permitted. Or are you saying that it's going to be a one whole unit?
230 acre rec zone, let's say, with one caretaker's house. That's it.
So you're saying, you're suggesting remove 5A, which is the minimum lot size permitted, shall be 10 acres.
And it's five?
Five is just the heading. 5B is the lot width right away. C is no structure, shall therefore, or park therefore, should be placed in at 40 feet at the side and rear. So it's.
So the whole five?
Yeah.
Was put in there to allow someone to build a house in the rec zone. So if that whole thing came out, it would be back to the way it was.
Okay.
I mean, if it was the owner's intent to subdivide it up to 10 acre parcels and put a house on each one, how high would it be for him just to get rid of the rec one zone?
You'd have to go back to, I'm sorry.
Yeah, before.
We'd have to go back to the town and change the zone.
But how difficult is that?
I mean, put a warrant article and change the zone.
Right, but it's not the town's property, it's his.
But the town assumed it.
Right, right. But I'm just saying, if he, his intent was to put a bunch of houses in there on 10 acre parcels, I mean, there's a way to do that. So I mean, us changing this isn't really going to change anything. It'll just keep you, you know, as long as it stays designated rec one zone, would be covered. But there's ways around that. So, I mean, do we want to?
Well, I think by rec suggestion of removing section five, that takes out the thought of subdividing a rec zone. But then to your point, Terry, if they really want to be able to subdivide it, they have to come in, try to get the zone changed to residential agriculture. It has to be voted on by the town. So those are the paths, or that is the path.
But there's no incentive for him to keep it rec one because you said there was no tax break for that zoning, right?
No.
So.
So what's the thought on this, on removing or keeping this section five?
I don't think it should be taken out.
I don't either.
I, I think the, the rec zone was originally designed so people in the town had somewhere to go. We have no parks, we have no more anybody. It's made for light use recreation. It's, it's made to be used that way. And even if it was subdivided and put, somebody put a road in, it's all going to be related to recreation. You could go in and you can have a nice park in there where you have a little, a putt putt thing and you have a little, you know, a discourse thing over here and some other guy's up there. He has a ski thing over here and you have a little arcade thing over there, something, you know, low impact and something the town can use. And I think by, you know, taking this out, it just totally squashes any future business idea that anybody could have to make that a really good workable rec zone. It's not going to be used for residential. How you made that more clear, that it can't be used for recreation, it already says that permitted use is in the, in the rec zone or listed in an appendixy and it says that it's all recreation. And if somebody wanted to subdivide it and put in, you know, a separate disc golf thing on a 10 acre parcel, they're going to have to come to the planning board, correct? And apply. So the town is going to understand what's going to be put there and how it's going to be used and if they'd like it or not.
So there is a disc thing there already, right?
Yes, yeah. Pretty expensive too. I walked around.
Did you think you would do that?
What's that?
I personally didn't. It should be pulled out.
Okay.
I mean, I understand where he's coming from completely, but what is to stop someone from saying, I want to build a house on the side of the mountain? Break off 10 acres. I have a rec area. He has a trail through my yard. You can walk down. I'm not building a house here. I mean, what's to stop them from doing that as well?
Chris?
Did I hear you say that the way this, the rec zoning, it allows the land to remain in current use?
Now, the land is in current use.
It is. So if you subdivided into these 10 acre rec lots, would they remain in current use?
Well, if they're 10 acres on touch, right?
Well, you can't live.
You don't have to put a house.
It would come out of current use.
So, but, but so that's, that's the point is now it's, if you're going to take it out of current use, it's still a rec zone. To build a house? I mean, there seems to be like a bit of a conflict there.
What's being used as dwellings today and buildings today should not be in current use, right? So it's everything other than.
Right.
Which means.
That, that, that part I get, but it's because it's part of a large.
That's correct.
Area and if you, if you allow these to be subdivided into 10 acre deals, that still makes it current use. So how could, how could you make an argument that you don't have to, now you don't have to take this out of current use to build, build a house? No, I'm saying, I think it, I think it muddies the water a little bit here because if you call it a rec zone specifically, it's owned for recreation and you're allowing a residence on it.
Caretaker's house.
So then you're only going to collect current use tax. So you're not going to be able to tax that, that, that usage of it?
Well, if they break it out into a 10 acre lot, you've got to be more than 10 acres to go on current use.
I guess just 10?
Just 10, but if you, well.
Well, that's what I mean. Like I, I see that as.
So if it's a regular residence, a regular lot, you'd have to take two out of 10. And the whole thing will have to stay out of current use.
Yeah.
So a 10 acre rec zone for the caretaker's house.
Well.
We got, we got no language in there saying.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. Like if, if it was written the way it's written, then you're saying that that caretaker's house is part of that bigger property in terms of, you know, as a maintenance building essentially, because you're housing the maintenance personnel. So maybe that could be considered as, okay, it's left in current use because it's part of that bigger area. But if you allow them all to be subdivided, now you, now you've got a bunch of houses, buildings, residences, no way of taxing them if you're going to allow that to remain current use.
It wouldn't stay, we, we can't change the state law of current use, right?
Right.
So as soon as they did that, it would be out of current use.
And buildings on current used land takes that footprint out.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but that's what, that's why I'm saying that this to me is a little bit, you either can or can't do it. You're either going to subdivide it, put a building up and it's going to come out of current use, it's not going to be rec anymore. Or, so, so is it, is there even a point in discussing whether it should be able to be subdivided for that purpose?
Well, it could be 10 acres and still recreational, recreational. But it's an area, you know, this, this old whatever, go far.
Yeah.
And I think so we're recreational, but not in current use. Heard you.
Yeah, I, I got you there. I think the stumbling block is the residence part that we're discussing. That's, it's kind of driving the discussion is breaking it into a subdivision.
Okay, let's not make this too difficult. How many rec one zones do we actually have?
One.
Just that one. So whatever you write only deals with that one piece of property. We don't have to worry about somebody else doing it across town, right?
Right.
So if we just say this, any rec zone is not subdivided. So in other words, it's 200 acres now. It'll always be 200 acres in order to keep the rec one zoning, which is current use, correct?
I'm just not sure that's legal. I wish I could be a lawyer on that.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying if you make it non, and this 10 acre minimum really is redundant because it's, it's 200 acres and it's the only one we're going to deal with.
Is there a way to have the language state that the residence must be ancillary to the purpose of the rec zone? I mean, I don't know if you can do that. I don't know if you can, you can tell somebody that, you know, if you're going to put this building on this 10 acre lot and it's, it's got to be ancillary to the use of recreation.
What are the maintenance and upkeep of that property? Which, I mean, I can see where you got to have somebody on the premises or something. That place is huge.
Because it says caretaker. When it says caretaker, are they stating caretaker to that purpose?
Yes.
David, is that what it means? Is that maybe what should be defined? If you're worried about people just making these 10 acre, making these 10 acre residencies.
I'm worried about that. I'm worried about that.
We over our time on this.
Yeah, we've flown it.
Yeah.
So.
So.
I'm just making a decision to vote.
Why don't you propose something? I'd like to make a motion.
I don't want to be a negative motion, so somebody better make a positive motion. Meaning if, do you want to remove it and change it or not?
John, you want to make a motion? What number is it?
Number five.
We've got to get him to vote.
Yeah, I'm like, I'm trying to listen to you guys. I don't have the stuff.
Took out number five, recreational.
Yeah, yeah.
Which just the one that says like the caretaker's section.
Well, it's in the appendix. So yeah.
Permitted use.
It's a permitted use.
I motion that we remove number five recreational lot warrants under recreational zoning.
I'll second it. So discussion, discussion.
I do love.
That would be, we will have a warrant.
Right. So we're deciding whether or not we want to make the warrant article to remove this, right? Part of the motion. Because we can't just say, if we're going to take it off, we have to put it in front of the town to vote on.
I would just amend the motion and just state the relation to the warrant article.
So you're amending the motion that we're writing a warrant article to remove section five from.
I would rather not make the motion.
Huh?
I would rather not make the motion.
But the motion was made. But discussion right now.
But under discussion, I'm just saying that we need to clarify that this is not just about removing and it's creating a warrant article to remove that.
It is, correct. This is, yes.
That's all.
Okay. Is there any discussion on creating a warrant article to remove our section five? Shall we have a vote? All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed to? The ayes have it. So we'll draft, I will, I will draft. The warrant. All right.
So the public suggests that you, you clarify for everyone that that lot is not subdivitable. You might need another warrant article that's going to change the zoning, but be clear that the intent is that's not subdivible. Isn't that your intent?
Yes.
Just make it clear in the zoning.
Yes, sorry, Mr. So, so we had, we had a vote, a motion to vote to create a warrant.
Yes.
To remove.
Yes, so you could, yeah.
But I'm sorry, so maybe there should be another motion to, to clarify.
Yes.
I want to make the motion.
So I'll make the motion to clarify our intent of this warrant article of removing section five from the rec one zone to not allow for subdividing.
Thirty seconds.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Discussion. Let's vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed?
Nay.
Stay in. Did you vote?
I said aye.
Okay.
I drew a stay.
I, I did not. All right, moving on. Building on crossfire from Sixth Road, rather. Slip there. Sent a warrant article. I forgot to print it out. So we met last week, we discussed, we rewrote the warrant articles, we amended them. Apologies there for not to. Print it out. We were discussing last week about meeting with services that are being provided for feedback. I don't think we have a meeting yet, do we?
No.
So right now, this is kind of for, that was part of our research to determine moving forward on this, right? So we're moving forward on this right now. Yes?
Do you want me to contact them and ask if they want to come to the next meeting? We're either going to call them and ask them, or we're going to have them come to the meeting, or we're going to actually have just an email communication.
Right. That's right.
We could, we can always put another meeting.
Yep. Well, let's go through all the other ones. Well, let's go through all the other ones. Didn't determine that. Uh, so this is kind of in the stall right now until we get more information. Next one, building codes. So I wrote a warrant article for the lawyer to review, to read, uh, Article two, A, three, B, in our building code, dwellings, one. Uh, no more than one dwelling shall be allowed on any existing or newly certified lot regardless of the lot size, which is the current zoning. And I added two, which is main building to have a foundation constructed with a four foot frost wall. Garage outbuildings in additions may have a monolithic slab if insert square foot in size, which we haven't determined yet.
Right. Also, uh, the size of the, uh, four foot frost wall, we need a, uh, a dimension on that. Is that standard?
Nine inch.
Nine?
Nine or twelve, depending on what the building is.
I was gonna say eight. I think, I think a standard wall is eight.
Standard's eight.
I think.
They can't, they can't follow them to two inches, right? Eight inch.
Frost wall with footing?
Yeah, if it goes to the footing, but the total would be four foot.
I understand. I think you want, I think you want a frost wall on footing.
Yes.
Footings, footing, frost wall on top of footing. Otherwise, it really doesn't do any good.
Right.
Okay, so I will.
Would you read it again, Tim?
Oh, jeez. With these edits? They'll get me on the spot here. I have written currently, main building to have a foundation constructed with a four foot frost wall, which we would amend to four foot, uh, frost wall on top of footing.
And I would think that they say maybe living, living space as opposed to what you call a main building?
Main building.
Is living space clear?
I don't know.
I, I would, I would definitely, uh, I would definitely add one thing, minimum of a four foot frost wall so that there's no, you know, because normally you have an eight foot wall.
Right.
Should be a minimum of a four foot frost wall.
Yeah, there's no basement, right?
What's that?
There's no basement.
Right.
Of whole space.
Yeah, it should be, it should be, uh, for the.
But a minimum four foot frost wall. You're saying on, on footing?
Yeah.
At the footing.
On, or, uh, I don't know, I don't know what the, how the code reads now, but it, it, you have to have footing before you put a wall on top, but. However, the, the code is written that way, but, and then it should be limited to the residential part of the, or the.
Living space.
Yeah, the living, indoor living space. Human habitation area.
Also, we have, uh, square footage for the dwelling. What's it, eight sixty-four?
Yeah.
Did you do that calculation before, Terry? What size is that footprint?
Eight sixty-four is twenty-four thirty-six, I believe.
Twenty-four thirty-six.
Yeah, but, yeah. But it's two floors, so obviously you could. So if you say, you, eight sixty-four, one floor is not a very big house.
Right.
So maybe doing living space would be the way to thought. You know, minimum fifteen hundred square feet of living space or something like that, which then they can have any size foundation they want, as long as they get that size of living space, I would think.
So eight sixty-four, count eight sixty-four as, uh, sixteen, seventeen, twenty? Twenty? Two floors. That'll be a cave, right?
Well, it could be. Salt bars could be. Ambre, what I mean.
Well, give you a thousand feet. Forty, forty-two, forty-four.
Twenty-eight by forty is what it used to go by.
If it's a ranch, yeah.
I think it used to specify the first floor, go back in the eighties.
Yep. So if we change this residential building to have a foundation constructed with a minimum four foot frost wall and footing, frost wall thickness to be minimum eight inches thick. Garage outbuildings in additions may have a monolithic slab if some square feet in size.
Minimum square foot for living space.
Would it, would that too?
It's only eight sixty-four right now. That, that allows for a very small building.
Four as a residence?
Yep.
If it's only one floor.
If it's only one floor, yeah. My question is, could you differentiate the footprint for a two-story building or a one-story building? Could you have two?
I think if you just minimize the, the living space, that covers that, doesn't it?
I don't think you need to incorporate the law here, just to specify certain square footers, do you?
Right. Eighteen hundred square feet minimum or something like that.
Out, out fronts, eight sixty-four. That, that would knock out a lot of branch houses.
The number's eight sixty-four right now. Probably shouldn't.
Yep.
And what's the number?
It used to be a thousand.
Can we put it back to a thousand? I think eighteen hundred square feet's a rather large house.
Yep.
Well, if it's an example.
Yeah. What's a typical, um, block length size to be a thousand square feet branch house?
So are we looking to change the building code, or are we looking to change the, the permitted use, the size?
Twenty-eight by thirty-six is your thousand.
Twenty-eight thirty-six.
Well, if you did a ranch, thirty by forty, that's four hundred.
So that's, the square footage is in a different section than what we're working on.
Square footage is in the first paragraph, right?
It is.
Well, and, and we're gonna break those out into, um, single line items. Square footage, foundation.
So we were putting in, we were putting in the building law requirements.
But that's, the first paragraph, that's where, um, comes up and says four hundred and sixty-four square feet.
That's correct, yes.
All it says.
Yes. Says farms and single-family dwellings with accessory buildings incidental thereto. Every dwelling shall have a minimum ground floor area of eight hundred and sixty-four square feet outside measurement. Fortune steps or ground level terraces are not considered part of the dwelling for the purposes of this section.
So that would be letter A.
Okay.
And then letter B would be foundation requirements.
Just know that, that's in the permitted uses section.
That's all we got.
Not in the building law requirements section. Okay. So.
She approved that, or wrote that law down, but to have that paragraph, and drop down the square footage in the frost wall, and now deleted eight inch roof.
She didn't, she, we didn't give her this.
Didn't hear that?
No. We haven't gotten anything from her yet. So, write this. This is gonna be an article. Two. A. Okay. Any thoughts on this? I'll rewrite, uh, what we've got, send it along. Next one's personal wireless service facility. So last week, we talked about, uh, continuing our discussion with this and determining what our next steps will be, because we work on this for the, for next year. They provided us with Tamworth's document, and I'll be honest, I haven't had a chance to read it yet. I'm wondering if we should mostly discuss right now whatever, a plan of how we're gonna approach this. And then from there, we can figure out what we're gonna discuss each meeting.
Mr. Travis, I emailed you a, the Office of Strategic Initiatives, uh, their, um, the information they have on how to put together one of those ordinances is, is as, it's a lot more complicated than.
You sent it. I mean, you're much time to look at that.
Oh, I know. I'm just saying, you should send it out to the rest of the board as we move forward
Yep.
to review it, because there's, um, it really depends on the topography, so we can't, I don't think we should just adopt another town's
Okay.
ordinance. That way, we can identify exact locations and locations that'll work. Might work to block it, but work so it'll, they can put them up.
Yep.
And actually, they have, you know, they have towers, you know, that look like this. They have towers that look like this.
Yeah.
And it shows, it shows, no, those, those are terrible. But it shows a faraway picture of that same
Yep.
tower.
Yep.
That you can't even see it.
Yep.
So I'm just saying if we have, so I'm saying if we, I would use this, the method that, um, OCI has and follow what is, is already there for us to use in putting this together.
Okay.
Because it really has to be specific. And I would hate to create an ordinance that just, just changes the height of something and think that's gonna work. Because then after we create the ordinance, this is why this, I think, I don't know how much, how much did Wolfboro, they paid a lot for this?
Um, guessing around twenty or thirty grand. Uh, a guy by the name of Steve Gill wrote it, who apparently has the telecommunications background. Um, I think we could get him, I don't know him, but I think we could get him to talk to you guys, or talk to all of us, and educate us perhaps. And that might, you know, and I think he would do that pro bono to educate us. And I, I just heard, and I don't know if it's true, but I just heard that T-Mobile just started to do West Osseti. I don't know, I don't know if you guys have heard that. Well, you know, the whole idea was just to get the town ready. And whether it was, you know, five years from now or tomorrow, at least we have ordinances that will allow a discussion, right? Because at the end of the day, you know, I looked at what we have, not thoroughly, but I did read through it, and you know, the ten foot, and usually it starts with buildings, right, and we don't have any of those, right? So, so it's more a question of, uh, you're right, there's a whole lot of detail to it, and to study it, and analyze it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And you could probably spend a year doing that, right? So maybe the, and again, it's just a window of opportunity to have it, so. It's up to you guys, but I could, if you want, I could see if he'd be willing. I don't know if you wanna do some work first before sitting down with him? Or you just want him to come and, you know, educate you so that. I think our, our intent is to spend the next year working on this. So I think we need to, I think that's a wonderful resource that I'm definitely sure we're gonna want to try to have a conversation with and, and learn. But I do feel from our conversation last week that we still have a lot we have to figure out as far as the process of how we're gonna formulate this, because there's so many details, having read through the Wolfboro one, it's like, you know, they went through with a fine foam in there, you know? There's so much information there compared to what we currently have.
Yeah, but it's more, it's definitely more defined.
Yes.
Which is not bad.
No. Yes.
It, it might be nice, though, to not waste time treading water and know what we need to get involved with and spend the next year doing if we have kind of some guidance
Yep.
to help along the way. So it might be a good way to preface the whole ordeal with having this gentleman try to get us on the right track. And, because we might be, might end up working harder than we need to. Who knows? You may save us a lot of time.
Well, I would propose that we take the December meeting to try to group and figure out what our plan is going to be, review the information that, that has supplied us for the OSI, and, and read through, uh, Tamworth's, which is another detailed, looks to be another detailed, um, zoning, much like Wolfboro. And then we get this gentleman in for January or February to give us, help us out.
Sounds good.
I personally feel I need more information.
Well, we got a little bit on our plate now anyway. I don't know if we could even look at it until January or February, right?
That's, I agree.
So.
Yeah, I, I believe you're right. I think we should start with a consult, so we're heading in the right direction. And just keep it on, keep it on the agenda and keep researching, um, what our next steps are, but we definitely could use a consult.
I agree.
You should just be careful that the consult, person that we're gonna consult with cannot be financially, you know, involved in, in whatever we're gonna do. Like, we go to an attorney to do ours. We shouldn't be using that person. If he's gonna be a consultant, it's gotta issue that clear that it's a consult.
So what's the date of the January or February meeting? And we should have Marshall deal to contact this gentleman and try to set her up ahead of time.
Sure.
Well, can you, Matt?
You may.
Can you, uh, send us, send the chair that gentleman's contact information, and we as a ward should officially ask him to come.
The other thing I was thinking is, I don't know if East Osseti is, I don't even know how the town, I mean, that's a part of Osseti, right? So if there, I don't know if it's fact or fiction, that T-Mobile's coming in there and actually doing this. But if we could find out, we could also find out what ordinances they have or they don't have. And may, you know, I don't know how that all works, right? So I don't know if. Or, or are they going on an existing tower? There's an existing tower in, in West Osseti on Long Mountain, so off, two, two to Perlaian there.
So the tower, tower.
It's the tower we talked about last week.
Behind you?
Yes, the one you shoot at.
That's Osseti, that's the tower.
Yes. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, thank you. Yes, I got my town.
I'm shooting at the tower. I just know I have to shoot in that direction, so I
Yes.
head it in.
Yes.
Like a tower.
Yes. All right. No, I got it. My town's messed up. It's a long shot for you.
Mr. Chair, I will, I will contact Osseti planning
Yep.
and gather some information there.
Yep.
And I'm still waiting to hear back from Tamworth to see who they used as a consultant.
Yep.
So that's what I'll do. I'll go back and make sure Tamworth gets back to me to find out who they used. And then. And then also find out what Osiphe's done.
Okay.
And I, we should, if they have an ordinance, we should see their ordinance too.
Yep, yep. So what would we group on this? So Osiphe ordinance. Okay.
Did you send us the Tamworth one, Ken?
No, I can scan it though, I did it for you. That was, and can you send me a link to that, then you're going to.
I sent it to you.
You sent it to him.
Do you want me to just paint a copy?
If you don't, yeah.
Do you have your copy?
I'm sure it is.
See, Tamworth doesn't own it, so they, they're just not really custom made.
The last item is master plan. Which I think we could probably whizz through these two things to the people up in the transportation section in the community facilities. Everybody take a look at them, any comments?
No, I read it, but the last video in the number one said.
All right.
And I didn't make any notes on it.
I didn't make any notes either, but I did, um, it starts out talking about roads and everything.
Yes.
And as it continues on, community centers, et cetera, we don't have any, so.
Yes, in the second section, yes.
And then the last section is something to do with transportation.
The first section's transportation, well, I mean, second one's communities.
The last section is, it tends to something like buses or.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is completely out of that one.
Thank you. So there's nothing wrong with the first introduction, section B, we talk about traffic impact analysis. You know, this looks like it's a advertisement to have SRPC come in and spend money.
Right.
So.
Did they mention busing?
I don't think we got there yet. So I would supposedly get rid of the traffic impact analysis.
Also mentions capital improvement, we don't have here either.
Right, that was the other one, yep. So I would say that we add to the first one, have a road committee, town road committee to, to assist the selectmen. Because I look at some of these items in here, which is road maintenance records, assessment of road improvement costs. Uh, access management, those are all things the road committee would, would help.
Like, like, like keeping a record from this point forward.
Right.
Right?
Right. Which would, assessment of road costs would go under that, road maintenance records would go under that. Now, Brookfield should prepare, update a transportation improvement plan. We don't have any of that, so that goes away, because that's part of the capital improvement program.
So it's scratching one and four?
Yep, coordination with NHDOT. Probably that's a bad thing to have there, right? Just does a lot. Town should work with NHDOT to encourage improvements to state roads in town, specifically the town should continue to urge the state to improve Route 109. Patching, paving, resurfacing, drainage, general construction. Ten years from now, it's going to have to happen again, right? We just had it done last year.
I think that's every, is it ten years? I've seen it done twice so far.
What, the ten-year plan you're talking about?
Make, um, maintenance Route 109. And look at a state road, what do we, what do we need to have inputted on that one?
Who does he?
Can't keep up what the town runs.
Who does the DOT communicate with in town? Do they at all? Your selectmen ever hit one of them?
I don't know what they drive.
But they are responsible for those state roads, right?
Governance road.
Yep.
Life road.
Route 109 and life road, stop the clock, right?
Yep, the card, yep. Yes, Ed.
Under, you, you had mentioned, I'm sorry, I was a little bit behind you, but it says the Brookfield should prepare an up-to-date transportation improvement plan.
Correct.
That is really important because this is what Brookfield missed every, every year that the funding from the state would come down for projects. And making sure that we have, you know, we're on the pulse of this plan is important.
Okay.
So I don't know, I don't see why that would have to be changed.
Okay, I, I guess it's because we didn't have knowledge of it, so. Is there a RSA that details how that has to be formed, improvement plan, what it looks like, or is that?
Well, the state, the state does it and it's part of SRPC.
The transportation, we pay them to do the improvement plan, we can't formulate.
The state does, the state will come up with that plan, I'm just saying that if we have, let's say 109 is getting, okay, remember when 109 needed to be paid?
Right.
For everyone to do it, but if, if we were on the pulse of this tip, this tip.
Yep.
They call it, then they would have known that we're kind of encouraging them, they need to do 109. I'm just saying that this is important to have in here.
So the statement says Brookfield should prepare an up-to-date transportation improvement plan, revise annually. What is that? My question is, I don't know what that is, what does it look like? Where am I going to find that information to formulate one?
I understand. We'll try to find that out.
Because that could be something that if it's funds, you're saying that the state would provide funds for?
You have to get on a plan, you have to get onto the ten-year plan.
For the road ma, for the state road.
Maintenance, correct.
Gotcha.
But let me find, let me find out more about that, because that would be, you're right, it should be clarified to what that actually.
Yeah, would you have to have a?
And that could, sorry, and that could be connected with a road committee.
Right. Correct.
So they could keep, keep an eye on that.
Road Improvement Committee? Eddie Asen probably would share it or something.
Well, you know, it could be worked into our, our own road committee.
Right.
We're delegating work, right, I'm sorry.
What's that?
We're delegating work.
Yeah.
Can only encourage.
That's right. So that kind of goes in hand with number five, that coordinate NHRT. Right, from what you're saying.
Yes, you can make one statement out of the two, probably, yeah.
Yeah, let me find out that process.
Okay. So access management. So that's kind of it. Let me have a map. So for the community facilities section. So there's references to the capital improvement program. Which will have to be struck, taken out. All right, we don't have a capital improvement plan.
We did have one, but it was discontinued, correct?
Right. So property tax relief. I think that's in our zoning currently. Police protection, fire protection.
Lock pay block.
Yep. Ambulance service.
Landfill.
Library. Sol waste disposal. Education. Recreation. Townhouse facilities. I don't think there's much to change in here.
What does education say?
Recognizing the value of public education, Brookfield desires to provide quality educational services for its school-aged children. The town recommends that it continue its membership in the government of the school district. It is further recommended that a school, that a Brookfield site be strongly considered for the construction of a new district school.
To last sentence, I questioned on that kind of, is that, are we looking to do that or is that just in there for?
I think we're the only town in the district that doesn't have a facility, right?
Well, Osiphe has, Osiphe Central School, Effingham has a school, you don't.
Middleton has a elementary school.
How many school-aged children do we have in town?
We flux between sixty and eighty.
Yep, more than I thought.
What are your thoughts, John?
Well, based on the number of students, I could probably be told.
I would disagree with you with everybody's thing.
Our kids, our kids go to the.
Coastal Wolf.
Oakdale Elementary School.
Yeah. Yeah.
There was a plan to, um, build a school in Brookfield, or there was a committee to do that. But they don't want to keep the resources in Wolfboro and it goes by vote. So there you have it, that's our school, Wolfboro.
Yeah. I mean, I would love to have a school system for all the people that have to, you know, pay Wolfboro what it costs to go there, but I mean, how many towns would have to be involved to create something like that?
Well, it could increase the fee to the, to the school district by building the school here, so the bill could get bigger the other side of it.
We got a high school.
Yeah.
Can't hurt to leave it in there, I don't think.
Did you say it was, it was discussed at town meeting, is that what you're referencing?
Uh, this was years ago.
Yeah.
Now I think we have land for a school, but when that was put in there, we only, the town only owned four acres.
Uh-oh.
Now we own twenty, sixty-four acres, right? So we got plenty of land for a school. I think you're saying, if I heard what it said, look for land?
No, it's further recommended that a Brookfield site be strongly considered for the construction of a new high district school.
We got the site already.
This is right.
All right, so we did move in that direction.
Anything else in this section?
The recreation, the access to Kingswood.
Yep. Desiring to provide reasonable recreational opportunities for its residents, the town encourages the provision of recreational facilities throughout the development review process, such as providing the town access to Kingswood Lake. What are you suggesting?
Remove such as providing town access, access to Kingswood Lake?
Yes.
It didn't the survey state that the town wanted access to the lake?
Yeah.
And it's also state law that water is not owned by, these, access must be allowed. And I don't know, is there, there's no way, is there any way to get on the lake? Everybody says the same thing, but is there?
There's been a hot item this last year and it turns out there's real, there's no access in the town. Can't afford it.
So, yeah.
So can I have clarification? Were you saying you wanted to remove that?
Well, we can't get access to it, I think we had a conversation like probably two or three months ago that basically stated that we weren't going to have access to that. And we removed it from something else that was the.
Yes.
What did we remove it from?
One of the different sections.
And we take it out, aren't you? That's the reason I said that, since we already removed it.
Yeah.
Yes, and how can you do that?
Yeah, I'll eat that because that's, the town still wants that.
Yep.
We had two point nine million, we'd be in hell, right?
Hey, you've got eighty acres over there, Tim.
Look at the swing set.
In a, in a home big, big enough for a school.
I just don't want to take it out because that should be left on the table for us to figure out how to do it.
Yeah.
Like maybe the town doesn't have, you know, doesn't want to spend the money now to do it, but we should just eliminate it.
Well, this is in the master plan.
This is the master plan.
Right, it's, it's not like one of the ordinances or something, it's, it's what the town does want, does desire. So I guess it probably should stay in there. So should we put it back in the?
Yeah, I'll have to go find where that was.
It was taken out of there.
We'll review the whole thing again, so don't worry, we can leave that opportunity.
So do you want to put anything on education on that last thing you just discussed about making sure that every kid has internet access so we can get anything?
Before I. Yeah, so they could go to school at home.
He doesn't ask.
I used to do the same thing, I got yelled at. No, I think that, um, I think with the, yes, I think it needs to be put in there somewhere, I don't know if it has to be under the education.
I don't know where it goes. It's, yeah, we have it in another section.
Yeah.
So.
And I think by getting this ordinance going and, and creating the environment to get better broadband by having the ordinance in. Because what's stopping it now is we don't have a viable personal wireless facility ordinance. So I think, I don't, I don't think it has to be the education part.
Yeah.
Because kind of everybody needs it.
Okay. That's that. Any member comments? Start with John, he's kind of right on the table.
What's that?
Do you have any member com, member comments?
I don't. Um, actually, this term the other time, did you read it right now?
I did.
Did I have a copy of that?
Yes, I meant to bring it, I gotta rewrite it again.
Whenever you're done with that, I gotta do it.
Yes, I'll put it together, I called it, that's the one thing I forgot.
Terry, you have anything?
No, I have nothing, I'm good.
Ed? Rick? I don't have anything. The next meeting is December seventh at seven o'clock, meeting is adjourned.